We'll call our city council work session to order. Please call the roll Jeff.
Yes, Councilman.
Resident.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Excuse.
Councilor Hopingson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. While they're getting set up, I'll just do a quick review of tonight's agenda. So if there's any questions from council before we get into it. We've not had anybody issue any, anything for public comment yet. We don't have any responses to the previous meetings, public comments. So we'll get straight into the consent agenda. But she'll have her city council meeting minutes from May fifteenth. City of Sandy Personnel Policy Update. Adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. The IGA with the City of Lake Oswego for after hours record entry service. Is there any questions for staff before we take that on? Okay, resolutions. We have a public hearing, City of Sandy Supplemental Budget Resolution. And we also have another public hearing for the City of Sandy Budget Adoption. Any questions on our resolutions? Under new business, we have a public hearing for EPA DOJ Consent Decrease Settlement Approval. As well as a discussion of our Gunderson Highway two eleven intersection improvement design contract. Any questions for that?
On this public hearing, will we approve?
I understand is we will be approving the.
So we hear you do the hearing. Correct. The city's accepting.
Accept. Yeah. All right, so we'll wrap up with our report from our interim city manager and our committee and council reports. All right, let's go and get into this work session. Parks and Rec Financial Sustainability Plan. Welcome, Michelle.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are here before you with the Park and Recreation Financial Sustainability Plan or Policy. And this has been work that we've been doing for the last eight months. And I have John Wallace with me here tonight, who is our Recreation Manager, who was the project lead for this. And so he gets to hopefully help share the spotlight a little bit and talk about his hard work. And the objective of tonight would be a discussion around the policy. We'll answer some of the questions, go over the decision timeline. And then hopefully at a later date, if the council likes the way the policy is written, doesn't have any comments, we would like to bring it back on the consent agenda for adoption. And our department would be happy to start implementing this policy. Okay, so really quick. So the agenda, again, like we talked about, we'll go over the decision timeline. We want to highlight some of the things in the draft policy. It was a long one. So if there are questions, there's just some main things we want to point out that might be some things that you have questions on. And then we'll talk a little bit about a masterpiece schedule and. And it's fine.
It's just.
All right, let me see if I can do this. Notes. Okay, you can still see it? Why, thank you. She made sure later. Okay, so let's talk real quick about the decision timeline.
Oh, yeah.
Did that work?
Yep.
Excellent. Ah, look at that. Okay. September fourteenth, we went before the Parks Board and our consultant held an educational session and answered questions about cost recovery to the Parks Board. Then on December fourteenth, we had a joint work session. And this is where the Parks Board and the council got together and there was the educational session held by our consultants. And then the council and the Parks Board used our service categories that we created as a department and then we ranked them. Whether it was a service that was a common good or something that was an individualized, more focused on, you know, is this for the common good or is a single person receiving the benefits from this? April twelfth, when our policy, we brought it back to the Parks Board. They reviewed and provided comments to our financial sustainability plan. And with some minor changes, we incorporated those. And the Parks Board recommended we bring it before the council for a session and adoption. So we're here with you tonight, June fifth, to talk about that policy and hopefully get it adopted. The next one. So I'm going to hand this over to John because this is really the fun slide that it synthesizes our policy in a graph.
Yeah, so taking over from the last time we did work on this. We had our consultant had to synthesize all of that information, our staff ranking, both Parks, Recreation, some your service side. Our Parks Trails Advisory Board and then session with the council. And they took all that information and kind of averaged out where we break them. And put it on this continuum. You can see on the bottom left hand corner, that is our most common good. To the top right hand corner, that is our most individualized based on these rankings. Along with that, on this graph too, comes our percentage goals that we hope to give back in our cost recovery plan. So again, using open access and rentals is kind of like our talking points. Our open access has a cost recovery goal of zero to five percent, meaning those are our parks and open trails. We don't expect to get money back on the five percent bears in case there is fundraising opportunities. And then on the other spectrum, we have rentals, that's a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty percent. That's where we're going to get a big bang of offsetting those costs.
Can I question that?
Yeah.
Um. The special, if you go back to this slide, the special events. You know, I kind of think of mountain festivals being a special event and all, but it doesn't cost anything. So I kind of think it's more like open access, but they're like way far apart. So how do you deal with like the Easter egg hunt and the mountain festival and things like that, that we're not charging anything to get into? But it's a special event.
Yeah.
Other than newest quest where you pay a fee to run.
Yeah, under our. The actual policy itself, it's got like the definitions and some examples. Those are going to fall under community events, which is right next to open access, which has a five to twenty-five percent. So that's going to be your winter fest. That's going to be your concerts. The special events are like for, yeah, newest quest, things that are more individualized, things like in the past, like more cross.
But the only nuance, though, that from what Kathleen listed off, is a couple of those events are not owned by the city.
Right.
Right? Like the Easter egg hunts Kiwanis, mountain festival, mountain festival committees. So like, but we do like sponsor and we do like participate. So does that all just kind of get lumped into community events in general? Or do we not really? Or is added sponsorship, you know, like partnerships? Or where do we allocate that?
I can speak to the programs inside of those events. So like for mountain festivals, so the rent department has like our three events that we do. And we will run those to the same sort of community events. All right, a lot of this financial sustainability plan that was attached to the agenda, it's a lot of review and talks about our purpose, like the educational background that we went through. But I do want to highlight some things I think are important that also come along with this adoption. And those are the investment expectations, our needs-based assistance and success metrics. Investment expectations, service category cost recovery parameters that should be reviewed annually, which means you'll go back and we had a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty percent for our rentals. Annually, we're going to look at each service category and see how we, how we did on our goals, right? Do we meet a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty percent in that category? If not, what can we do to change it? And then the subsidy and tax dollar investment goal should be analyzed and updated at least every four years or more frequently as necessary. And that's speaking to the percentages themselves. So looking at that one twenty-five to one fifty percent, do we need to tweak those or make adjustments to those? So this policy just has a mechanism to make sure that we are analyzing our work and have a list to do so. Needs-based assistance ensures that services are accessible to residents who may require assistance and support in accessing parks and recreation services. Our department's goals to provide financial assistance to those in need. We don't want finance and economical status to be a barrier to our programs and services. So we want to make sure that we have those options available and we are going to come up with some creative ways to offset that cost by doing some funders.
One of your proposals is to really have not, to not have any kind of requirement to kind of elaborate on that.
Yeah, so our goal is if you, if inside this policy, if you need help, basically all I got to do is ask for help. And we will, we will give it. There's not going to be like a formal application process where you necessarily have to prove your income status. Like back in the day for free lunch, you would have to provide a lot of information showing that you were in this economic category. If you need help, you ask for help during application process, we're going to provide you with that help.
So, so with that, I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder.
Steal.
But Kathleen, that with that, there will also be, say you're a parent who's signing your kid up for Mount Storm basketball and you've got some extra funds. So you can put extra funds for scholarships for kids for various activities as well.
Out of our point of sale system, there's two pretty like low, low hanging fruit ways of raising funds. That is like the roundup method like you do when you go to the store. Would you like to round up to the nearest whole dollar? Whatever it is, that would go into the bank and to if it was for Mount Storm, like that trust to help offset funds for that.
Are you doing that?
Are we doing that currently? We are not.
Yeah, so you're like, you're just going to have to brand it as something. You know, some.
Oh, for the.
Yeah, you know, seven for youth athletics or. Yeah, that's great. Cool.
Then something else that's super important is our success metrics. All right, and then these are the metrics in which we will evaluate to see if our programs or services and our financial sustainability are working. So the first one is our financial viability. Do we actually meet those percentages that this fall within our one twenty-five to one fifty percent? The second one is our operational efficiency. So with each of our programs, we have goals of how many participants we want to see. Did we meet that capacity? And then three or four customer support and then customer impact. And those are going to be done with surveys. We use survey monthly right now. We started this year. We did it for Mount Storm, we did it for our instructional week, we've done it for our movies in the park. So continuing to use that, probably get a goal of eighty-five percent.
Do you get pretty good response on that or is it?
We've only done it for those two things I said and the responsibility really good for Mountain Storm. I think it was like a hundred and twenty surveys back out of, I think it was a hundred and ninety-something for the total amount. And it was like an eighty-seven percent overall satisfaction for programs.
So just the fact that you get fifty percent back is pretty, pretty impressive.
The registration software helps a lot, right? We're able to really send those out to people who participated.
Hey, so we'll take it back over from here. So this is a sneak peek at the master fee schedule for the Parks and Recreation Department. And this is something that will come in front of the council again in June, I believe, a look at the citywide master fee schedule. And so one of the things that we realized as a brand new department that we were missing some consistencies. So we had some master fees for some amenities and not for others. And so the reason that we looked at over the last eight months, our master fee schedule is for a couple of different reasons. And one, it's important to provide clear set of guidelines for department fees. And then we use this master fee schedule as our budgetary goals for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. So it helped us create, what are our revenue projections? The other thing is it reduces any ambiguous pricing. And so a clear master fee schedule is going to help us make good decisions that we can back up. And then it ensures competitive pricing and financial sustainability. So again, there are a few things to highlight. We currently have resident and non-resident fees for some amenities, but not all. And that was pretty inconsistent. And so we took a look at, in our proposal, our policy or master fee schedule, we have a resident, non-resident fee. And actually what we're calling our resident fee is our resident discount. And then we have our basic general fee. So when you see resident discount, it's the residents are getting a discount and we'll charge our non-residents just a little bit more. The mechanism to determine right now our resident, non-resident fee is we take the base fee and we have fifty percent of that not to exceed twenty dollars. That's how we establish that non-resident or base fee. And then lastly, we had the community campus had agreed space fee. So if, you know, a soccer club came in and wanted to use it, we could charge them an hourly rate to use that space. But we were having that happen system wide over the park, the park system. And there was no mechanism for us to ask these groups to, is there a profit making using public property to pay a fair share or potentially contract with us? So we could work with them on offering like yoga in the park. So we added a green space fee that if they call up, we actually have a mechanism to say, yes, great, you can absolutely use that. That public space for profit making. Or even if they're a nonprofit, there's still a lot of those agencies or organizations are making money out of public space. And then we did add options based on, we were receiving calls over the last year and a half, people wanting to rent other shelters at our sites. And it's a profit making which meets our cost recovery goals. So we added some other amenities to rent shelters. And so we illustrated the master fee schedule in the next few slides. So you can see here. They have the gazebo amphitheater had a current fee of two hundred dollars per resident, three hundred nine. So we kept those fees. So we have a new resident discount fee and then a non-resident or general fee of three hundred. Same thing with the Centennial Plaza. And then we added Meinig, Bornstead, Cascadia, and Sandy Bluff will actually be, will be adding some shelters at that site that we can rent out for a cost recovery effort. When the public can rent those.
Good question.
Yeah, can I ask you, back to the profit making and even the nonprofits making profits? So will you see any football or the baseball organizations and such that are we going to charge them? Money to use the fields for practice and such, even though that, that money that they make goes directly back into the program for our community?
Yeah, and I'm not aware. Are they using?
Like the. Using that as a hypothetical.
Yeah, well, a real example would be Mount Hood Soccer.
Okay.
And so they were at a community campus for quite a bit of time. And they were using that space and having their girls down there. So because we had a mechanism to charge them an hourly rate to use that space, we were able to recoup some of the costs that it takes to maintain that site. And so that would be a real life example of allowing us to recoup some of that maintenance cost for the use of those fields.
So that we can keep the field short.
Yeah. And the other thing too, like if, another example would be, we had a yoga, a yoga instructor who wanted to teach private classes at Meinig. And right now we have no control over that. So there's a liability issue as well. So yeah, we were able to engage that contractor or that yoga instructor. Now she's contractor for us and teaches yoga at the center. And then we have the ability to offer any of those yoga in the park classes as a, as, you know, essentially working together under a contract. And then recouping some of those costs for our time.
So my only concern specifically around like youth sports is those costs just get put back onto the families that are trying to play.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's my concern with those fees there. The yoga instructor profiting, I get it. Even adult sports, I get, like, I think we, but, but when it comes to the youth sports, I want to be really cognizant that we're not passing a cop, passing along our cost just to make it more prohibitive for kids to participate.
Right, right. And there's some really creative ways to, to work through that too, where sometimes there'll be sometimes like shared responsibilities of field draining and cleaning. And so then you enter into a memorandum or an agreement that says, oh, hey, you're going to do a hundred hours this year for X, Y, and Z. And because of that, you're helping keep our indirect cost or our direct costs down. And then it becomes this partnership of yes, we'll waive the fear greatly, reduce it, but you're also helping us out on this end.
Great. That's, that's what I was kind of hoping, the private, public partnership kind of thing to where that's absolutely, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Were we charging before recently, though?
The, the fee for community campus? No, that would, that happened, we started to charge the last year and a half.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We did just briefly before COVID and then that sort of blew up everything. So I think there was maybe like a half season where we charged a couple.
Okay.
I can't think of the soccer organization now. It wasn't not that it was a. Maybe it was.
So now it's like using gazebo. So I, I can go use the field for free if I want, but I'm risking that somebody else is going to be there first.
Last question on the fees. For Centennial Plaza, we reinstated that fee because we were having too many. Control things a little better about what happens there. Do we still have the ability with this to waive a fee? Or in the case of the, it was a Veterans Day and we had one of those things when we chose to sponsor an event. Is that still allowable under what we're proposing?
Yes, yeah. And then, and actually as a department, again, because we're such a new department, we're building on our policies and procedures. And one of the things that we're working on is a partnership criteria that would establish when and how we would partner. And a partnership would include waiving, you know, monetary so rental fees. We provide, you know, resources including staff and expertise. And so that would be the mechanism to do that. And we've actually done that with, with the veterans for some of our events that are, that are.
Kind of building on that, just what about like the berry sellers there in the? It's in their last so many years.
So we, we end up occasionally with a.
Every year.
Well, I know. We'll get like a retail flower, you know, type operate pop-up type. I want to call it a food cart, but they're selling flowers. That'll just show up at Centennial Plaza. And we have a process for that, I guess.
Well, or, yeah, these guys are, there's a farm that sells berries there all summer long.
So Thompson Farms specifically, as I don't know if it's, I don't know what the format of the agreement is. They historically paid a monthly sort of rental charge just to use that, you know, ten foot section of the plaza or whatever.
I, well, this, to be honest, I, I'm going to play the new card after a year and a half. I'm sorry.
So historically, Centennial Plaza has been, even though it's a park, has been managed under the planning department. That has, is in the process of being transitioned out. So that's, you know, a, a knowledge download that we need to do from the existing staff that have managed it. But I don't foresee a change in that process because they are stationed there for an extended period of time operating business.
I guess what I would argue for though, it doesn't need to be done like high priority, right? But some sort of process to be built around that program. Because I mean, what stops them, you know, a bunch of other retail type pop-ups from popping up and wanting to get that exact same deal? You know, on any, in any given day. It's just building some sort of process around that, I think would be nice.
All right, community gardens. So one thing that we did, we had resident fees for community gardens. So we added a non-resident fee. We're not adjusting the resident fee, but we will slightly be increasing the non-resident fee or the general fee to twenty-five dollars as opposed to twenty. And this will start, I mean, if it's, if this master fee schedule is adopted and goes into effect July, well, residents will actually see this in January when we start re-renting the beds again. So that's just a slight adjustment. And then the community center, senior center. So the team did research, did comparables, and we looked at what our continuum was giving us as a goal. So our rentals, because it's on the high end of the continuum, it's an individualized benefit. So it's a hundred and twenty-five percent to a hundred and fifty percent. So we crunched the numbers and I, when I say we, John really led the, the process here. Right now, it costs us, if we were to do on the lower end, thirty-five dollars an hour for a cost recovery. Or we could charge forty-five dollars on the higher end to meet our max cost recovery of a hundred and fifty percent. And right now, currently our expense is thirty-one dollars an hour. And that doesn't include indirect expenses such as bathroom supplies and cleaning. So to help absorb these costs, we added a one-time twenty-dollar custodial fee. So as our rentals increase, we can offer an option to keep the place cleaner and more professional looking and more desirable for the community.
And we will do that. Keep it nicer and more presentable. Go ahead.
Coming back to your, so these rental facilities. I'm assuming one hour has a certain amount of labor support associated with it. And three hours is probably not three times that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, the building monitor, we pay an average of about thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. So that's a given cost out, you know, we're paying someone. And then facility use. So one of the things we did through our cost recovery analysis is we assigned actual percentages of what it would cost just to keep the facility running. And so that's how they're determining what those hourly fees are.
I, I'm just wondering if for these types of things where we have people staffing, things like that, is, does it make sense to have a tiered fee? First hour, first and second hour, and then later hours at a different rate?
Like a.
So that, right, number one, I mean, when, if I, I'm a chief and I rent something for an hour, I will be there an hour, ten minutes. Guaranteed, right? I mean, that's just by the time I'm out of there. So to make sure you're covering your full hour, if you want to turn it up for that first hour, and the second, third, or somebody's got all day, you know, that becomes a more attractive rate for them. I don't know, something to think about, I think, when you're doing facilities with people.
And does the organization that's booking the room need to be local or just the person who's calling from the organization?
That's a good question. The person calling that's making the reservation.
Just kind of overall question. How are you able, one of your processes is trying to figure out whether or not you've recovered the, the costs? How do you, how are you assessing the total cost of something? Because you've got, you know, you may have staff, you've got building costs, you've got, you know, like the guard, community gardens, you've got the cost of, of maintenance. We, we have in the past provided them with compost and all that. We provided them obviously with water. The water bill is probably the biggest thing. We make about, if you're charging twenty bucks a, a pop, I think about thirteen hundred bucks a year, which would barely, you know, cover the water. So how, how are you able to kind of assess the true cost of delivering these services in a way that meets your measurement criteria or that other process you had a couple of slides ago?
Do I get that in answer?
Um.
So the consultant came in and actually, that was part of the work. And they analyzed and took the budget that we had on all the different divisions and we looked at directing indirect costs.
Okay.
And if you, I could literally take hours to show you the data. I think that's really great.
So you have figured out.
Absolutely. And we have, yeah, we have. Yep, okay, yep.
All right.
And I, if you ever want to see it.
Yeah.
It's really.
I do think we could charge more for the community gardens. I mean, Portland charges like thirty-six dollars or something. So.
Yeah.
And they desperately need to be, you know, rebuilt. So.
And we were pretty mindful about comparables too. And then this is just recapping the green spaces and the field fees. And then you can see here that we had a current fee for the community campus. And then under that umbrella, we added various sandy parks into that, just so we had a mechanism again, to find and locate these groups that they were using public for profit making and a way for us liability wise and capturing some of that rental resource.
Was there a reason for doing just eleven to two on the shelters?
Yes. So here's why. We weren't sure how the public was going to respond to a larger swath of time. So because we're a new department, we're backing into it. And if it's, I know, I received an email over the weekend about wanting to rent Bornstead. The public might love it. And if they do, we'll expand those hours when we do our analysis next year. And then the master fee schedule is back before the group. And so we're really, it's a, we're testing it. It's new. So we're being careful. So.
Part of it was trying to keep those open spaces open for the public too, especially at Bornstead, that one shelter that's going to be rentable. It's like the only shaded spot for that splash pad and have it be able to be rented the entire time it's operating. It would be a bummer for just the local public films to show up and use it. Be mindful of both of those needs.
And then to add to that too, there's staffing conspiration. So the more that we have the shelters rented, we're going in and providing extra cleaning and making sure that it's taken care of. So multiple reasons. Okay, that is the end of the presentation. And with that, we just recommend that council provide input. If there's any additional questions or if you support the policy as written. We would really like to bring it back at a future council meeting on the consent agenda. Provides a great goal for us as we report into the next biennium. I'll pass it on to the team.
All right, I'm right, yeah.
I'm, I'm really impressed from when we last saw this to where it is now. I think it's so dialed in. I may have made a comment here or there. I can support this as this. A lot of hours is done.
Yeah. Just continue to appreciate professionalism of your, of your department and how you're about doing things. Thank you. Thank you, both of you. Appreciate it, guys.
I just want to support what Don mentioned, and I really do appreciate what you put together. I was wondering why we didn't have a flat fee for all services for the first hour as an increased rate, just due to administrative costs that it handles to process the applications coming in. And then the second, third, fourth hours being a reduced price. So you always garner that extra, like in that one case, twenty dollars. Why didn't we apply that to all of them? Because there's always an increased cost for every time you do, you know, you have an event for administration. It's just another way to, to make more money. I like that. Like, I'm building on that. I like the idea that every year you're going to revisit this. So you're looking at this as a pilot prototype. And if this isn't implemented this year, maybe it becomes fodder for next year. I think that's where I'm saying, I can go either way.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. Adjourn our meeting at seven PM. With Sandy City Council meeting in order, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Formation under God. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. You are great. Um, all right, um, Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilman, here. Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Walker. Councilor Exner.
Excused.
Councilor Hockinson.
Here, uh, per normal, I'll start with the review of tonight's agenda. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get to public comment. Um, we have, uh, one that's been submitted, none, no, in person, then online. All right. So that will be the opportunity for public comment. We didn't have any public comment at our last meeting to respond to. So that we'll move immediately into our consent agenda that has our city council, uh, minutes from May fifteenth. The City of Sandy Personnel Policy Update, an adoption of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. As well as an IGA with the City of Lake Oswego for after-hours record entry services. We'll then move ahead to resolutions where we'll have a series of public, um, hearings. Those will be opportunities for folks who may want to testify on those items, both which deal with our budget. The first being our public hearing on the City of Sandy Supplemental Budget for our twenty twenty one, twenty three budget. And then we'll have a public hearing to adopt our twenty twenty three, twenty five, uh, biennial budget. We'll move ahead to new business where we have a public hearing on our EPA, DOJ Consent Decree Settlement Approval. As well as a discussion on the Gunderson Highway two eleven intersection improvements design contract. From there, we will wrap up our meeting with report from our city manager Tyler Deans. And round off our meeting with committee and counselor, uh, reports. With that, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, let's move ahead to public comment. Again, we have, uh, one signed up, Mr. Bill Leslie. Um, uh, Bill, please at the podium, you provided three minutes. You'll get a three second heads up from our city recorder. And remember, state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Bill Leslie. I live at three, seven, six, two, five Southeast Kelso Road, right on the edge of City Limits. I've lived there for thirty three years. And, uh, some of you know, some of you don't. Once upon a time, I sat up there, enjoyed it very much. Thanks for all you do. On December eighteenth, the city council approved some changes to fees for business licenses and the use of an online payment portal. To pay for business licenses. I'm going to add some information that you didn't hear at that meeting, that, and my hope is that you will reconsider your decision. I listened to the online meeting three times, portions of it that relate to this. And I will quote from the video. You were told that the city wanted to, quote, add an online payment portal option that would streamline the process. Help reduce some of the staff time that it takes to manage that, as well as to provide an online payment capability that we don't offer. So there is some end user benefit as well. What you were not told is that effective with that change that you approved, they will no longer accept payments by mail, no longer accept cash, no longer accept checks. The only way you can pay for a business license is by going to the online portal. Some people, as you know, don't have internet. Some people don't have a credit card, and there's no way to get, if you don't have a good printer in your house. No way to get a paper copy of your license, which the IRS requires that you have. I found out that when I went to pay for a rental license for, for a small house that we own. So there are no ways to make payments. The city refused to accept them. I don't think that's in our best interest, and it wasn't disclosed to you. It was, it was explained as an enhancement to what we currently do. It wasn't an enhancement that was clean. They also took some things away, like being able to walk in and talk to somebody over the counter, which I think is good. There was another change, uh, another bit of information that you didn't receive that I think you should have. You were told that most fees would increase from forty one dollars to eighty five. That's true. Jeremy Peasaw, after a moment or two, said, will that apply to rental housing as well? He was told, yes. Well, that's not quite true. That suggests that the rental house, the fee to have a rental permit went from forty one to eighty five. No, it went from ten to eighty five, a seven hundred and fifty percent increase, and you weren't told that. Jeremy sort of implied that that was what he was asking, but his question was unclear. I don't think you want to have a seven hundred and fifty percent increase. And I'll mention to you in passing, I did research. Estacada's current fee for a rental house permit is zero. Happy Valleys, zero. Malala, zero. Oregon City, zero. To Walinton, ten bucks. I stopped calling and finding out what they were or looking at their website after I'd done a little bit of research. Is eighty five bucks a lot? Well, it depends on the situation you're in. Most rental houses in our area or trailers, mobile homes, are not. Owned by big corporations. They're owned by individuals, many of whom are on retirement. So for those two reasons, I'd like you to consider, I urge you to consider, do we really want a seven hundred and fifty percent increase in the fee that we charge for rental permit? And do we want to refuse to accept payments over the counter, be it check, credit card, or cash? I will mention in passing that we narrowly didn't have approved this last year. In the US House, uh, measure that would require that if you accept any payments of any kind at a facility, you're required to accept cash over the counter. Up to two thousand dollars. It's supposed to be on the agenda, and they're going to try and pass it in the next session. So. Thank you. Um, so food for thought, um, I don't think it's in our best interest. I don't think it communicates. The friendly city that we want to be, and I don't think that you had all the information that you needed when you approved that on December eighteenth. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Absolutely. Uh, a reminder, we do do the response to public comments. We'll have that at our next, uh, meeting. I know, uh, my mom for years has driven around the six or seven different places to pay in person, cash. She's just that kind of person, so I definitely understand. Is, is that right? Yeah, how interesting.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving ahead with our agenda, we are now to the consent agenda. Um, unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Sir, a second.
A second.
Some motion from Counselor Sheldon and a second, uh, from Counselor Hockinson to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by say nay. I oppose nays. Motion carries. All right, moving ahead to resolutions. I'm going to open public hearing at seven oh seven PM. Um, Tyler, please with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, as you know, the City of Sandy operates on a two-year budget. The, that biennium twenty one, twenty three is coming to an end here in a few weeks. And traditionally, we do some housekeeping. Items at the end of the biennium to, to clean up any budget overages or ensure that we have appropriate, um, appropriations in each fund. And so I'll start by, you know, outlining the process we touched on a little bit earlier tonight, the Urban Renewal Board Meeting. Um, it changes that are less than five percent of a, of a total budget can just be adopted at a regular council meeting. Changes that are greater than ten percent need to be, um, kind of public hearing needs to be held. And nearly all the changes that you'll see or hear, uh, here in just a few minutes are above ten percent of the fund total, which is why we're holding a public hearing. And there's no initial questions on process. I'm just going to jump right to those changes and.
Go ahead.
Time her out, okay. So the first fund that we'll discuss is the general fund. This is the only fund on the list this evening that is not in excess of ten percent. But it made sense to streamline and have one hearing instead of two resolutions, so that's why we're including it. And the really, the only change here is, um, updating. The general revenue department to reflect the actual amount that was received with the ARPA grant. We had budgeted two point three million. We received a little over two point five. And so we're, uh, updating our, um, federal grant revenue and correspondingly, uh, increasing the transfer to non-departmental. Non-departmental, which is where all of our ARPA funds have been housed throughout the pandemic, and that's just helped us sort of streamline our reporting. Easy to identify where the funds are, where they've been spent. And so this is just truly a, a, um. A housekeeping function to increase transparency from an audit perspective and, uh, easy accounting for me to. Continue to track all of that meeting, how it's one department. Street Fund, uh, as you know, is responsible for all the capital and operational work done on the city streets. Um, during this biennium, the street fund has incurred most of the capital expenses associated with Bell Street and three sixty second extension. As you know, that's been, uh, you know, a number of years in the making. We issued a full faith and credit obligation. Uh, last biennium in nineteen twenty one. And we did not get to move as quickly as we had hoped for during the construction process. And so there was quite a bit of, um. Loan proceeds that rolled into the current biennium, and we've incurred most of the expenditures associated with that project now in this biennium. And so the intent here is to just reflect the increased beginning balance that we had at the beginning of the twenty one, twenty three biennium. And, uh, use those funds to offset the additional expenditures that weren't budgeted because we thought we would have been spending more money. Two years ago, and those just rolled into the existing biennium. So proposing a two point four million dollar, um, increase here, the vast majority of which is. Um, uh, fund balance, uh, excess that we were fortunate to have due to those, um, loan proceeds not having been spent yet. Next on the list this evening is the water fund. As you know, we've started some capital improvement projects within the water fund. Most, uh, recently, the, the effort has been, uh, Sandercock Reservoir. Total capital cost, we're expecting to be about one point three million dollars this biennium, uh, one million of that is a loan. Or the Sandercock improvements, then we also have about three hundred thousand dollars, uh, in revenue that's in excess of what was budgeted. And so this will just. The X, the, the increased revenue will offset the increased expenditures. We'll be increasing appropriations within the water fund by one point three million. To reflect the spending at the, it's anticipated by the end of this fiscal year. Uh, wastewater fund, no surprise here, uh, all of you are very familiar with the wastewater fund, um, projects that we have going on. We've been very fortunate to receive some grant funds as well as low interest loans, as you're all intimately, um, involved with at this point. But two years ago, it was a very different, uh, picture when we were presenting the budget. We weren't quite sure when project costs would hit. How far along we'd get with certain project costs. And so here we are today, um, with about eleven point five billion expenditures. In excess of what we had budgeted a little over two years ago when we presented that budget to the council. Uh, all of those expenditures are offset by either the grant funding that we've received or by, uh, amendments to the SRF loan that we've been able to secure. And so this is just, um, right sizing the budget to make sure that we don't exceed our appropriations this year. And second to last, we have the stormwater fund. Again, the council's very aware of some of the issues we've had in our stormwater system over the last couple of years. Most notably, the, um, Tupper Road and, um. Strawberry Parkway issues that have needed to be emergency fixes. There was a four and a thousand dollar interfund loan that was authorized at the last council meeting from the wastewater fund to the sewer fund. And so. Um, at this point, everything is good to go in stormwater. We just need to increase the appropriations to account for those capital expenditures that we've incurred. Or plan to incur before the end of this fiscal year. And last, but definitely not least, is the telecommunications fund, soon to be called the Sandy Net Fund, but this jumped ahead of, uh, the other resolution. Um, Sandy Net, as, as you all, you know, are familiar with, is, um, uh, an excellent service we provide here. We have an eighty percent take rate with. The residential customers, um, and, you know, from time to time, we incur additional expenditures running, um. Uh, fiber to and from homes. And, uh, as well as that, we also have the ARPA allocation from that first tranche of funding, the four hundred eighty nine thousand. To connect specific areas of town and specific apartment complexes to our fiber network to ensure, um, reliability and ease of access. For those community members. And so this, um, cleanup here will just be increasing the appropriations of the telecommunications capital. Funded by six hundred and fifty thousand to, uh, appropriately categorize and allow us to, uh, expend that full amount. Um, to ensure that we have complied with Oregon budget law and equipped the community members in those specific areas of town with the internet access that they desperately need. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I don't want to get into the next topic.
Yeah.
But the next topic affects this topic because there's fees that are due in the twenty one, twenty three budget. Have those been accounted for in the wastewater plan?
Uh, that is not accounted for in the existing biennium. Those will be reflected in the upcoming budget. There is a small placeholder, although I don't think I had the exact dollar amount when we, um, were building the budget for the wastewater fees. But we can touch base briefly. There is plenty of money, though, within the wastewater fund next biennium to offset those expenditures, yeah.
All right, uh, no more questions. I'll move ahead to public comment. Uh, if you wish to, um, issue public testimony, you'll be provided three minutes. Our city recorder will provide you a twenty second warning. We will need you to state your name and address for the record. Uh, if you're in person, please raise your physical hand. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. And if you're telephone, please dial star nine if you wish to participate. Mayor, so look for any raised hands. Not seeing any in the room, looking online. And there I do not see any raised. Back to you, Tyler.
I have, um, no recap to provide at this point.
All right, sir, I'll now call for a motion to close the public hearing. I'm going to motion close the public hearing. Sir, a second. A second. Motion by Counselor Sheldon and, um, a motion by Counselor Sheldon, the second by Counselor Hockinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose nays. Motion carries. All right, discussion. No discussion. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty five.
A motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three, twenty five, the resolution adopting supplemental budget. For the City of Sandy.
Uh, Counselor Walker has made a motion that, sir, a second. Counselor motion, uh, Counselor Walker made a motion, seconded by Counselor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I, I oppose nays. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you very much.
I now. Right, now open public hearing at seven sixteen to discuss the twenty twenty three, twenty five City of Sandy, um, budget. Tyler.
Hey there, me again. Number four. Um, as you know, the City of Sandy operates on a two-year budget from July first to June thirty. We are, uh, quickly approaching the start of our new biennium twenty three, twenty five, which will begin July first. Um, as the council is aware, uh, we held a series of budget committee meetings, um, at the end of April, beginning of May. Where the budget was presented, um, and public comment was received. The budget was, uh, approved by the budget committee as presented with one additional modification. So I guess as amended would be a better phrase to use. And that, uh, was an amendment that was provided by Counselor Hockinson. Allocating nine hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars of general revenue excess. And it's detailed in the staff report, although I'm happy to discuss, um, any of those specific allocations that were made and voted on. If there are any questions about them specifically. What I would just like to highlight is that, um, that nine hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars was a one-time source of funds. That is going to, um, facilitate some completion of some council balls that we've had for a really long time. I think a highlight internal would be the library outreach vehicle. That's been a topic of discussion for a number of years. And so seeing that come to fruition is really exciting for the Sandy Library staff, um, as well as the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that's been. Allocated to parks, buildings, and grounds for both winter fest purposes, as well as some, um, maintenance for the art that we have currently. Uh, in place. And unfortunately, Council Dexter is not here to, to, uh, hear the, the positive, um, outcome of that.
He feels.
At a later date, um, that fifteen thousand dollar allocation. And so with that, there's two steps to approving the budget for twenty three, twenty five. The first would be. To hold this public hearing that you're doing right now, um, and adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash, dash twenty one, which is the election to receive state shared revenues. Those revenues, generally speaking, are liquor tax, cigarette tax, and general station revenues and gas tax revenues that we get from the state. So that, uh, resolution needs to be adopted by itself. And then the second resolution to approve this evening would be resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty two. Which is, uh, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and levying the taxes into funds to the operations.
Great. Thank you, Tyler. Are there any questions for Tyler before we move ahead to public comment?
One question I have is, um, regarding the fees similar to what got brought up, uh, as our public speaker. I know we look at those fees every year. Don't we do it in like June or July?
So the intent is to bring those back on June twentieth, the next council meeting. Um, and hold the public hearing for the increases and adopt those.
Okay, so this doesn't set those in.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll do that next week or two weeks from now.
All right, moving ahead to public testimony, um, again, um, if you'd like to. provide public testimony, will you have three minutes? Our city recorder Jeff will provide you with a twenty second warning. Would you require you to state your name and address? If you're here in person, please raise your physical hand. If you're joining us virtually, please raise your virtual hand. If you're joining via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand.
Hey, mayor, looking for any raised hands? Not seeing any in the room looking online. Mayor, I do not see any raised.
Tyler, we're back to you again.
Happy to answer any questions from the council. If there's anything specific, otherwise recommend adopting the two resolutions as outlined in the staff report.
Great. Well, thank you. I will call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I think a motion to close the public hearing.
Sir, a second.
Second.
There's a counts, there's a motion from Counselor Maitland and a second from Counselor Sheldon to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. We are in discussion. Or you have two motions that we need to get through.
I'm here. I moved to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty one, a resolution electing to receive statement shared rev.
State share.
State share.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Maitland and a second by Counselor Smallwood to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty two?
I'll move to approve the resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty two, resolution adopting biennium twenty three, twenty five budget. Making appropriations and levying taxes.
Sir, a second.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Maitland to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty two, seconded by Counselor Sheldon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations, Tyler.
Congratulations to you, county.
Process. Let's get another one of those awards, huh?
So.
All right.
So when we're getting updates on Winter Fest, the bus or the news.
Yeah, yeah. Hope those are all talked about. Your city manager report here. That's great. All right. Another public hearing. Going to open public hearing at seven twenty two P M on the EPA DQ consent decree. We will have our city attorney, Josh Soper.
That's right.
Yeah. Soper present. Hello, Josh. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and city councilors. So as you are all aware, and as many of the members of the public who are watching are likely also aware, the city has been experiencing a lot of challenges with its wastewater treatment system and has made tremendous progress towards resolving those those issues. But we still have the issue to deal with of the past violations of that system incurred and the enforcement proceedings that the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality and the U S Environmental Protection Agency have instituted against the city. And so this agenda item tonight is about a settlement agreement known as a consent decree that staff, together with my office and Leeway Engineering, have been working with DQ and EPA to negotiate for quite some time now. And I presented a very detailed staff report, so I won't go through every item in detail unless you want to. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer detailed questions. But I just wanted to highlight a few key items where we focused our negotiating efforts and where I think we got a good outcome for the city. One is the fine amounts that the city will pay. So the city will, in some, depending on how you construe it, the city will be paying either five hundred and twenty four thousand, three hundred dollars in fines or three hundred twenty four thousand, three hundred in fines. Technically, the city has the five hundred twenty four thousand, three hundred number in fines due. But the city is able to use two hundred thousand dollars of that towards restoration of Tickle Creek between three hundred sixty second and highway two eleven. So rather than just paying that money to the state, the city is able to get some environmental, local community benefit from those funds. And to put that, those numbers in context as well, if the city had not been able to negotiate a settlement agreement and EPA and DQ prosecuted the violations and the city were found responsible for all of those violations and paid the maximum fine amount. Total amount the city could have been facing was a hundred and sixty nine million dollars in fines. And even within the context of a settlement agreement, EPA has a guidance document that they use for determining what fine amount should be paid under a settlement agreement. And that document would calculate a fine amount of between twelve and fifteen million dollars. So we're many orders of magnitude below what it could have been a worst case scenario and even significantly, significantly below what it could have been under normal circumstances within a consent decree. And the reason for that further reduction is because of all the efforts the city has been making during the interim time while this was being negotiated to remedy those problems. The tens of millions of dollars that the city has spent to start moving towards long-term compliance with its permanent requirements. The other change I want to, or the other aspect I want to highlight is that the EPA and DQ agree that the twenty nineteen facilities plan is not affordable and agreed to allow the city to develop a new facilities plan, which the city is currently working on in terms of what the long-term solution looks like. And also agreed to give the city up to fifteen years to implement that rather than the ten years they had initially proposed. And finally, the one that has the most immediate impact for the rest of the community, most likely, is that through several rounds of negotiations and back and forth, we ended up with a allotment of three hundred ERUs, which is equivalent residential units to measure of flow, equivalent to the at the average that a single family detached dwelling produces. Three hundred ERUs of capacity that the city will be allowed to approve building permits that would generate that capacity of flow during the time period between when the consent decree is approved and when know the actual capacity of the plant as a result of the stress test. And that, that's an increase from the hundred and twenty year use that we have currently in our development moratorium. And so staff does anticipate if this consent decree is approved by council this evening, coming back with a revised moratorium with an increased ERU count, which will allow significantly more development to move forward and construction to occur in the coming months and less impact on the developers who got their applications in before the moratorium came down back last October. So with that, staff's recommendation is that this consent decree overall represents the best possible terms that the city could reasonably hope to accomplish. And we recommend approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of discussion on this. If there's any questions, please do, but otherwise, we'll move ahead to the customer.
I just have one more. I just want to repeat what I asked the last time with a little more specificity this time. And I saw the cash fines of five twenty five and three twenty five respectively. But then there was something in there about doing six sewer collections before twenty twenty three at the end of this year, I thought.
Correct.
And I didn't know if those costs were, you know, I don't know if they cost ten thousand or a million dollars. I just wanted to make sure that we were covered for the the services that they're asking us to do within that decree. Because some of those were, and I know the new biennium, we should get a, you know, an influx of cash. I just don't know the budgetary constraints on.
I was waiting. I was waiting.
Come on. I just want, I just want somebody to reassure.
So the answer to your questions are yes, we've had FCS model, the affordability, as well as the projections of these. The fines and all the work that's required was included in the biennium budget and these initial pieces will be paid for by the ARPA grant, the fourteen point seven million. We want to spend grant money first to help mitigate impacts to ratepayers. And then we also have closed on the forty six million dollar second SRF loan with the low interest rates. And so those, those are planned for. I will say again, the the six the six remaining sewer basins we have to investigate. We're not expecting to find as much as with the four, the four worst basins we just completed. And we also negotiated whatever we find that's a category four or five defect. We don't have to pay to fix those for ten years. So we pushed out that timeframe as well.
All right. We'll, we'll move ahead to public testimony. As I said in earlier public testimonies, if you're here in person, please raise your physical hand. If you're virtually, please raise your virtual hand. If you're through the telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to testify or see recorder will, you know, you have twenty seconds remaining. You'll need to state your name and address for the record.
Hey, mayor, looking for any raised hands in the room? Seeing none, looking online. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right. Josh, do you have a staff recap?
I suppose my recap would be that the, as I said at the end, staff recommends approval. The negotiations were long and involved and and I think we came away with a lot of positive terms for the city and a situation where the city unfortunately didn't have a lot of negotiating power.
Thank you, Josh. Those are always fun negotiations to be in. I will call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Is there a second? There's a motion by Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Hockenson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. We're on the council discussion and in the agenda, there's that proper language for emotion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the negotiated consent decree with the U S Environmental Protection Agency and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality.
All those, there's a motion by Counselor Smallwood. Is there a second?
Also.
Motion by Counselor Smallwood and a second by Counselor Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, everybody at the city for all the, all the work that's gone into this. Appreciate it. All right, moving ahead. Gunderson Highway.
Pause longer. It's been so long.
Moment of silence.
I think so.
All right. Okay, moving ahead.
That lasts a long time.
Well, highway two eleven intersection improvements design contract.
Welcome.
How we doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Excellent. Jeff, did I put a presentation on this?
Yeah, actually I have it loaded.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Just move. Just see if we get my thirty seconds.
Yeah, now we get it.
So while they're doing that, just, I mean, we can't say enough thanks to the staff, Josh. And before his legal team that kind of hammered itself. This could have been disastrous for us and we can live with this. It's not great, but path forward, so.
I think it's also important to say that a lot of these fines came, were happened when all, none of us were.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, what we're handled, handled.
All right. Hey, AJ.
Mayor and councilors, I'm here to talk to you about the improvements of the intersection of highway two eleven and Gunderson Road. So as you can see on your screen here, this is the location of the intersection. Currently, we have one leg of Gunderson and two eleven. It's right on the urban growth boundary and it's within Sandy's jurisdiction of two eleven. It's the main access for Shelly Meadows, new development. And this is just a quick look of what we can see from roughly the location of the intersection here. You can see looking north that first turn heading toward Sandy and looking south. You can't really see on the screen, but just pass us there. There is a fifty five mile per hour speed limit. So the reason we are taking this project on is first and foremost, safety. We're trying to reduce the fatalities and the accidents along two eleven, get them as close to zero as possible. We want to get our traffic flow to and through the city up as good as possible and provide mobility for future bikes. Pedestrians that'll be using this area as well. The second reason is we have a development agreement where we received a half a million dollars from a developer for the development of this intersection or the improvement of this intersection. There is a tentative date of June twenty twenty four to have this construction underway. And this was part of the subdivision agreement for the subdivision. A third reason is the improvement of this intersection is part of our TSP. There are some possible solutions listed in the TSP, which is the addition of turn lanes, the addition of a signal or a potential roundabout. So the first step of this contract will be reviewing some alternatives for this intersection, whether they be those listed on the previous slide or anything else that our engineer can come up with. The main focus for those alternatives will be our traffic rating, which is how traffic flows to the city, safety, of course. Cost of construction, the speed of construction and the impact of that construction on existing traffic in our neighbors. Of course, we'll select the best alternative that's in the best interest of the city and of city staff as well. So the funding for this project, we have a million dollars, including the design. We are looking to have a shovel-ready project available to help us seek out and find funding. We are also planning to get that work where get ourselves on board with some funding opportunities as soon as we start the design, once we have a alternative selected. And having that shovel-ready project or a close to shovel-ready project does help us actually acquire the funding we're looking for. It makes us more competitive in the competition. And apparently that's all I have. So if Amy has any questions for me, that would be great.
My thing is, we're not settling in on, because there's already some comm, community conversation about this. We're not settling in on a roundabout or a light or a turn signal. This is a first step in investigating those options.
This contract that we're looking to approve today will be the first step of that contract will be determining the best alternative for the city. And then from there, that will include the design and any land acquisition or anything else required, permitting, studies, all that.
Any other questions?
No, that's the same question you have.
All right.
I have a just historical question for those of us who weren't around when we did the the transfer to eleven. What portion of two eleven moved to the city control? Is this it or in it or outside of it?
Everything from Gunderson.
From Gunderson. So this is the boundary of that.
That's correct.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. All right.
Everybody was freaking out about trucks and coming down and let the hills and speed and all that. And I know we're going to be reducing the speed, obviously. But this, if it was a roundabout, then you're talking, it would be designed so that trucks, large trucks and commuters could get through there.
Correct. And Counselor Walker, thank you for reminding me, a speed study is also a part of the first phase of this project, which will give us the opportunity to lower the speed limit along two eleven. And then, of course, the design will be based on that speed limit.
Very special motion. I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Harper. Is it hoof?
Hoof.
Hoff.
Hoff.
Peterson and help me out with the next one. Regalus, thank you for design of intersection improvements of highway two eleven and Gunderson Road.
Is there a second? There's a motion by Counselor Smallwood, ladies first. So second from Counselor Walker. Oh, I knew Small was going to come at me with that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, Tyler, report from city manager.
All right. So we'll see how this changes over the next several months as I come up with more creative things to share with you tonight. I have a few things I'd like to pass on. The first is that we got word this weekend that Planning Commissioner Stephen Hook has resigned from the planning commission. As you know, this workload in the planning department is pretty heavy right now with the lack of staff, so it might take us a little bit longer than usual to fill that. But we will start working on filling that open C as soon as time allows. And mayor, I don't know if you'd like to appoint three people to serve on that interview.
Well, I think we could just continue the same committee that we had last time, which I believe is comprised of myself, Counselor Walker and
I have to look it up.
Yeah.
Feel like it might have been Rich.
I think it was then, but.
Yeah, but when we, this is, yeah.
Okay.
But wha-
Rich doesn't seem like she's really wanting to go out there.
Do you want, does somebody else want to do it?
I don't know. I I I mean, I I represented because I was the planning commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, or maybe Chris should have it. Chris, let's have a Chris in for Rich on that.
Perfect.
Um and then I understand that planning has some problems with staffing right now. But we're going to advertise the position for our city recorder. Our city recorder is going to be the person who works with the committee and wrangles all the applications together. So what exactly is it that, what deficiency in planning is preventing us from moving forward with this?
Well, maybe a better uh response to that or initial statement to that would have been just the the tightened um amount of available capacity that Jeff.
Well, that's a better answer. I can accept that all day.
We're not proposing, you know, a three-month delay here or something, uh you know, super.
So three days or something.
Three days.
That's fine. That's fine. It just kind of was something that popped up that.
Valid question. Yeah.
Thank you. That's totally fine.
Um want to highlight a state enforcement project that the police department uh took care of this weekend. My numbers are correct. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I think there were seventy-five stops, forty-nine citations and two arrests that happened uh on Friday night, so.
Nice.
Um a nice win for the police department. Citation revenue was also a plus, so.
You didn't have to put that. And none of us for one of them, so it's great.
It's great. Safety was mentioned first, though, for that main reason. It's a huge accomplishment for that department. And then I want to thank the council and the budget committee members for their work to review and approve and adopt the budget. That's, you know, not only a time-consuming process for staff, but it's also a lot of extra work outside of the normal council meetings that that you all end up attending and um you know, we appreciate the support from members of the public volunteering their time to to sit alongside you and ask questions and help us work towards getting a final budget adopted. And then uh last but not least, I want to also thank the council for the opportunity to serve in this interim role. It's my first meeting here as interim city manager, so appreciate the opportunity. Looking forward to it. Um I'm sure, you know, I've worked with you all in the past in many different ways. This is a little bit of a different capacity, and so I'm looking forward to to what that looks like over the next several months. And then with that, I will take it over to Jeff to give you a brief update on the city manager.
Awesome. Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate it. Thanks, Tyler. We're happy to have you. Thanks for accepting.
Thanks.
Uh just very briefly, um I believe um everyone has done their stakeholder interviews at this point, so those have wrapped up today. Also wrapping up today are all of the surveys. So there's a staff survey. There was a community survey. Um so basically, all that input work is done as opposed to business today. So the contractor business strategies is working as we speak on drafting a position profile. Uh we will be meeting as a council to consider that draft profile on uh June the twelfth in that special work session. Thank you, Mayor, for your flexibility on scheduling that. And then uh we will consider, after incorporating the feedback from that work session, there'll be a final uh position profile for adoption on June twentieth. So we're moving right along, getting ready to advertise this thing. Um probably around the first of July.
Great, thank you.
Is that the uh city manager report?
That's it.
Thank you, guys. Don, you're up.
Cool. Uh the Sandy net uh order committee that that we sit on is kind of imploded with people defecting, leaving. So we have interviews coming up. I think this week hopefully we'll get some, get that it's cheap, but back together, hopefully. So uh not much has happened there. And then uh the other things I'm working on, I think, I've kind of been paused waiting for this budget to get approved, so shout to you and others to figure out where we go next on the community campus and what I can do there. Oh, knock some buildings down or who's next?
Crane.
Exactly. So anyway, good job on the the traffic enforcement. I I love the the fact that you're out there for four hours and for several days thereafter, Facebook continues to remind everybody that you were out there for hours. It's just like that multiplier effect, so it's beautiful. It's great.
I sleep.
Um we don't have a library meeting this um month, but the library's been active as usual with um they've been donating fines for food and doing uh uh one of the library board members donated uh nine of the still-life paintings and they raised seven hundred and five dollars for arts programs at Sandy Library. Um so, yeah, there's been some really neat things going on there. Of course, they've got all these activities that are just one after another for kids and and, you know, the uh little, you know, toddlers and stuff, the reading hour. Um so just banging it out of the park there. Um there is a nice uh on on the um, what do you call the monthly reports section online? For for us, there is a nice um going-away letter to um from uh Jordan that he wrote on his last day that I just read, so it's very nice. Um so.
His last day, you updated. I wanted to know how long it would take for us to see that.
Monthly reports from everybody. Um.
Not always monthly.
And then the um, I saw the potholes on the plaza and got filled. Um so I was just curious, is there gonna, is that, is there gonna be like an overlay or something to cover to cover those up or? Um, just curious.
They went out there and they did what they called um but they did some quick fixes um on on the worst streets. Um and it is planned, I I believe the street they fixed with the same ones, it's probably the overlay in the past project.
That's what I thought, because people were like commenting, like, oh, that, you know, is that their fix? And and I kind of figured it was.
It was just a temporary thing. It just.
Okay, great. We all helped a lot. It's, you know, much better than the big hole, so I very appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Rich?
I I don't have anything tonight.
Laurie? Yeah, uh the only thing that I'd like to add is just uh thanks to the Parks and Recs um for your presentation tonight. That's been a lot of work. It's gone in that over the last several months and and for the Parks Committee uh board as well, so. Nice to see that movement and fruition. I know my first uh first term here on council, it was a common and conversation piece of why are we not charging for events or why are we not receiving funds? So it's it's awesome to see that moving forward, so thank you.
Chris?
Um we didn't have an economic development meeting, and that's Wednesday, so I'll bring that next time. Uh the last uh planning commission meeting was twenty-second of May and uh they approved the transportation system plan for before the council, so we should be seeing that relatively soon.
All right, couple things. One is uh we've got music and uh and uh movies in the park coming up. Lucy, my daughter Lucy, and then Sheri, who's Carol's daughter, got to go put up posters. But I haven't seen one of the posters. So who who are some of the concerts that we got coming in?
We would not.
Yeah, my favorite, I would serious, would match tribute band. They're a pretty tight group. They're July twelfth, their first one. And then Nate Bosford is a local country artist who does some pretty regional, well-known touring uh originals and covers. And then the last band is uh Radical Revolutions, and they are like an eighties pop tribute band.
Very cool.
Great.
Yeah.
So three solid band choices. I think it would be rocking.
Great.
The movies are Spider-Man, the one where it's.
Yeah, which which one is it? It's Tom, whatever.
And uh Tom Holland.
Oh, they're all there. As long as Tom Holland in my house, he's something else, I guess.
Uh the live-action Buzz Lightyear are movies.
All right, very cool. Thank you for that. Um I was able to go to a good portion on Friday at the C four retreat. Uh uh councillor Sheldon, I think you were there for a lot of the duration of it. Um two big topics was housing on Friday and then transportation, specifically tolling on Saturday. Um I think a lot of us, quite honestly, would have been pretty disappointed with Friday on uh just to focus being housing first. And um and just the over-focus on housing being the fix of all needs instead of, you know, treatment, medical service, that's the health services, recovery, some of those things. Tolling, there's broad uh everyone, I mean, that's a good, you big unity thing for everybody in the county ride is is what's happening there with tolling and really talking through some of the strategies there. Um so I'll continue and engage with that group. If anybody wants to get more involved in those conversations, please just reach out and I'll I'll plug you in. Uh mountain festival committee, big reveal, big announcement this week that sadly, we're not going to have um a carnival. It's a portion of the uh of the mountain festival. We'll tell you with the twelve and ten-year-old at home and nephews, that's pretty disappointing. That's kind of their reunion, you know, during the summer, they all get together. Um it, you know, the the festival committee worked really hard to have a carnival. Uh the folks backed out at the very last minute, want to make sure you have a safe carnival, you know, and heavily vetted these guys when they come in. I let them know, it sounds like they did say that the size of the carnival, you know, and the money-making opportunity wasn't that great. I I said, reach out. If you want the Sandy Community Camp, Campus, where's that? You know, just, we're we're here to coordinate, try to help out if we can. So unfortunate news. Uh looking forward to having that back next year, though. Uh just came back from a mayor's summit where we had a bunch of different mayors in Clackamas County around, good good update on the community. Was able to talk a lot about three sixty-second bell, the new park we have coming up, uh winter fest, a lot of the exciting things going on. Remember, we have the longest day Parkway coming up, so I know that we've got some emails on that, but get that on your calendar. That's always a fun time to visit with the community. When is that? Is that the twenty-second? Two and twenty-second, that's coming up. And oh, uh one thing I wanted to mention with all of the mayors, uh having just come from them and different talk is just thank you to staff and uh to our police department, folks that were on our homeless uh task force. We really took on the time, place and manner um stuff. But I mean, almost a full year uh before any of the other um cities did. So I'm really proud of our efforts there. I think we did a great job. Um obviously, we're, I'm sure there's some tweaks we'll have to make or uh things we'll need to learn, but really proactively got some more resource or tools, I feel like, in the hands of our law enforcement officers by doing that. I'm just proud that we did that. Thank you to staff for doing that. And I'll let us go. We're gonna break before eight o'clock. Uh I'll just say, uh, how's it going, guys? First week without Jordan. You guys feeling pretty good over there?
It's going great.
All right.
Going good.
It's like, it's going great. It's great. It's no problem.
Today.
All right.
I mean, day three, you know. Hour and fifty-one minute.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you know, like you solved that problem. Yeah, that's.
I'll show you how it's done.
Well, we we look forward to seeing um, you know, how everybody progresses with taking on additional responsibility and stuff, but we appreciate everybody doing that, stepping into those roles, so. Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, Jer.